Good evening and welcome to this evening, this month's school board meeting. We'd like to welcome everyone. There are agendas on the table where we signed in at if you'd like to follow along with tonight's meeting. Approximately one week prior to each board meeting, all board members receive a packet, including the agenda and supporting documents. This allows each of us time to research any topic and ask questions prior to the meeting. I would like to have everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, flag is on the north wall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Moore?
First order of business, I would like to recognize Tana Lobb, one of our outgoing board members, so if you'd come down here, please. This has been given for four years of dedicated service to the MSC of Martinsville. Board members are thankless tasks. They spend hundreds of hours every year in meetings, going to events for students, and we just want to thank you so much for your work. Next, I wanted to, I'm dressed casual today because this week is casual week in the MSC of Martinsville. We did a hat day for our students on Wednesday, and it's been casual week for the staff. They can pay five dollars or pay a dollar if you're a student, and we did it as a fundraiser for the education foundation. And we raised over $2,200 for the education foundation, and that will go directly to teacher grants this spring. So I wanted to thank everybody who was casual with me this week. It was awesome. That was a lot of money, and that will be a lot of teacher grants. So I thank you to all of you for your dressing this week. We also wanted to announce that Smith Elementary received a grant from the Community Foundation of Morgane County to purchase new equipment for their performances, and that grant is $2,476. So that is another great announcement. And then the last announcement that I had was we just received the letter from the safety auditor at the Department of Ed, and they have reviewed the safety plans at all of our schools and found all of our plans compliant. So this is a kudo to Tim Foley, our new director of safety, because he led us through that process, and I want to publicly thank him, and I'm also thankful to the community that our schools are safe and compliant. So I just wanted to know. Next, I would like to recognize the Bell staff. I want to thank them for hosting a board meeting at the last second. One of our other principals is on crutches, and we just felt like it wouldn't be fair to have them set up for a board meeting on crutches, so Bell graciously offered to have it. So I want to thank Mr. Ogden and his staff for hosting the last minute, but I also wanted the staff to stand so we could give them a special recognition. We always appreciate it. (applause) So we think you're going to be happy to make this a great place, we thank you. So thank you, Bell staff. You've been a lot to us. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ogden for just a little bit. He's going to talk to us about PLCs and the journey they're going on to at Bell.
Thank you very much, Dr. Moore. If I could have to our PLC leaders and administrators, Mrs. Oakley and Mr. Sederloff, for me. This is my second year here at Bell, and when I came last year, it was my vision to implement PLCs for Bell. Our staff, not only these people who are up here with me, but also Mr. Pratt and all the other teachers, they've done a phenomenal job working extremely hard. We've pushed them and they've gone above and beyond for us, so we're extremely thankful to them. So part of the process is to really focus on data and focus on what we're doing to help students learn. And this is a process that usually takes about three to five to six years to implement it, and we're about a year or two in about a year. So it's pretty exciting for us, and it's all of their hard work, so I'm thankful for them. I'm going to take you through a little bit of the PLC process, kind of the behind the scenes of it. I'm going to have some of our staff members talk about how it's not only impacted them, but also impacted our students and their achievement here at Bell so far, and then we're going to show you a couple different components of it. But before we begin, we start every meeting off, every small meeting, faculty meeting, PLC meeting, with celebrations. That's part of the PLC process, celebrating student achievement. I always say that if we can start off by celebrating the good things that students are doing, it'll kind of put our own attitudes in a good place so that we can have a productive meeting. So I'm going to start off with the celebration, and it's all of these people standing up here with me, as well as our administrative staff, our secretaries, all of our other teachers, because PLCs, they're working. I had a kid who came up to me today who struggles academically, and he came and found me and said, "Mr. Ogden, I'm going to have 156 points on our exact test." And that kid last year would not have cared whether he went up or down on that exact test. And it's the conversations that all of our teachers are having, the goals that they're setting, and they're really taking ownership in their own learning. So that's very powerful for me, and that's a celebration for the staff and for our students. I'm going to take you through our four school goals, the PLC process, kind of impact of these four goals. Increased reading variety across all content areas. All of our staff members, content areas, they have benchmark assessments, and our students here, every time they take a common assessment, we're reaching for 80 percent. Obviously we're 100 percent, but 80 percent is that goal. So you'll hear a lot of the kids saying, "Did I get 90 percent?" And if they don't get it, they want to retake it so that they can try to get that 80 percent. So that's one of our second goals. Align classroom management plans with PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Support. And then number four, that's one that they never go away in this building because we're always striving to become more successful and implement PLCs with Bell. When I got hired last year, the first part of the PLC process was our instructional alignment. We kind of had to have a core set of beliefs, and I think these individuals will tell you that they get tired of telling me, say, tight, loose, tight, but that's our approach to curriculum and instruction. It starts with the tight part. My expectation for them is that in their content area, they are covering the same standards within a day or two, within a couple days. They're following their basic guides, so they're tight in that process. They're all teaching the same thing at the same time. The loose part, that's their craft. We all, all of us as educators, we have different styles, so they're able to put their own style on how they implement those standards and those objectives. So that's the loose part, that's the craft of teaching. And then we come back to the tight part, and that's tight how we assess students. So we give common assessments every week, and our expectation here at Bell is that every kid in that content and that grade level is taking the same test so that we can talk about all kids and compare apples to apples, not apples to oranges. And last year we started this process, I would say we were about 60 percent bought in. This year I would say we're 100 percent bought in, and it's really having an impact on student achievement. The second part of the instructional alignment is they hear me say similar to identical. Our product, my philosophy is, when I walk into classroom, I want it to be similar to identical to other classrooms. I was in Mrs. Collier's class for observation, and then I went to Mrs. Howard's class. They were both teaching sixth grade math. They were both teaching the same lesson, same objectives, same standards, two totally different lessons, both lessons were phenomenal. So they were similar, okay, to identical in how they were carrying that out. So the first part of the PLC process, before we could get to the how we're going to do it or what we need to do, is we had to know what our why was, right? And that was started with me and Mrs. Oakley and Mr. Sederloff, and we had to start by looking at our students. So we had to look at our free reduced lunch numbers, had to look at ISF NWA observation data, and then we had to look at where our kiddos are at in terms of reading levels. And then we wanted to turn that up to our staff. We wanted to know what they thought we needed to do to become more successful. And that first bullet point there, the number one thing that they told me is, we need time to collaborate, we need time to meet, and the PLC process is driven by a common time once a week that they can sit down and meet. So I took that into consideration. They also said, "I don't have enough instructional minutes to teach. I need more time with my kids so that I can have an impact on learning." Intervention, success. Last year, actually, yeah, it was last year, our sixth graders, there was about a third of our sixth grade students that were not getting any extra support in math in ELA because of how related our schedule was. Passing periods, they will tell you that last year we had about 680 kids passing it once. It was crazy. You know, you feel your heartbeat going up every time you went out the hall. So we took all that into consideration, and we got started on a new schedule. And we can also tweak the schedule, but I think we have a pretty good schedule that allows for all of these things to be considered. After that, we went to our PLC leaders. So I identified 11 leaders in the building who I wanted to teach this process to. And those are the 11 that are up there. These 11, except for Mrs. Curry, because she joined us this year, but Mrs. Curry is now one of our PLC leaders. And we have about eight meetings. Now, when I say eight meetings, we met once a month, eight times, but there were a lot more meetings, there were a lot more informal conversations that were going on. These folks will tell you that PLCs are my passion, and I can sit up here and talk all day, so I'll try not to. Some of the topics that we looked at during those meetings, you know, what's our why, the three big ideas behind the PLCs, they're going to tell you about those in just a minute. We created our mission for Bell, our vision for Bell, collective commitments for how we're going to work together, group norms, SMART goals, and then also we try to tie that to our curriculum alignment of tight, loose, tight, and then also the common assessments that I discussed earlier. A professional learning community. I've been in two different school corporations, and I've heard the word PLC thrown out there a lot. PLCs are not a program. Programs come and go. PLCs are not a meeting. I see, I hear a lot of schools and a lot of corporations say, "Well, hey, we're doing PLCs." No, you guys just meet and you plan and then you leave. We are truly a fully committed PLC, and it's not a membership, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that. So there's a lot of myths behind PLCs, but we are truly implementing PLCs here at Bell. I'm not going to read all this to you, but the two biggest things, the PLCs, the driving points of PLCs are right down here in blue. Our number one focus in this building, we're focused on what students are learning. And other PLCs that say they're a true PLC, but they're not, they're focused on what they're teaching, not what students are learning. So they're needing to plan what they're going to teach, not what the students are actually going to learn, okay? And the other big driving force behind PLCs is every student in this building, they're our students, okay, not my students. So, you know, Mrs. May, she has 90 students. No, she doesn't. She has 683 students. Because when we meet as a PLC, we're talking about all kids, not just my kids. So it's really taking ownership in the building, not just for our own community, and our driving focus is, we're already successful, and I tell them every day, but how can we become more successful in what we're doing? I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Gonzalez. She's going to talk about the big idea number one behind PLCs, and then we'll share two more with you, and then we'll keep progressing.
So the big idea number one is to ensure student learning, and we do that, I'm not going to read all of this, but by focusing on four critical main questions, like at the bottom, we do it, we do, what do we want students to know and learn? We use our curriculum maps, our basic guides, and that's that tight part of, within a day or so of each other, we're all teaching the same thing, we're all in the same standards. Now, the way we teach in our classroom is up to us. How do we know they're learning? Those are those common formative instruments that we give at the same time. So that way, when we go to sit down for a PLC meeting, my science partners and I are talking about the same data, we're talking about the same tests, so we can see how all of our students did together as a whole, and what we need to improve upon, or somebody else in their score is better, I can say, and you know how to do, teach this, and helps us out a lot. And what do we do when we're not learning? Those interventions, and I think a lot, this was a big change for me, because a lot of times you give a test to test the subject, you give a test to test a skill, but what do you really do with that improvement? And this really drove that, sitting down and looking at it, and you did something with it. You have a plan, an action. It's not just giving a test to make sure they pass it and you're helping the subject. You push them, you give interventions, and I can go off the next one to the extended learning opportunities. And that's our intention. If they know it, we don't want just stop there, we want to improve it.
And the next we got here for PLCs?
That leads kind of naturally from what Mrs. Gonzalez was talking, because the collaboration is always coming together. Coming from a smaller elementary and not having as many people, it's a totally different concept of bringing seven, oh, not three, fifth grade teachers together and sitting down and discussing at this point. So it's been a big change in shift in our thoughts and our philosophies. It's making a great impact though, because I think we're coming prepared by looking back at our data and knowing what the students were able to do, and looking at all of our students, as you said, collectively as a whole, and seeing how we can improve and bring them forward. We're looking ahead by looking at what it is we're planning for and what we need to anticipate as we move forward, and then we discuss where we are. It's not, like you said, it's not just sitting down and planning. We're truly taking time to figure out what we can do to hold students accountable, what we can do to drive students forward, and improve all of our students together. I think that collaboration has been the greatest impact because we're given guaranteed time. It's giving us time to actually sit down all together and get that conversation going. I also think the format that we're using, it's beginning to work. We're beginning to see it. Coming prepared, there's some front loading to it, but by doing that, we're able to have deeper, richer conversations, we're able to plan. When we go back to our rooms better, because we know kind of where we want to go, and we're getting stronger, and interventions is stronger with our enrichment. I think coming from a smaller background, it may look, PLCs may look different as they spread out through the elementarys, or spread out to the high school, but I think this process is working. I think it's really got a good impact on all of us coming together, and that's why I was excited to come to Bell in the first place, because I was looking forward to that collaboration.
Your final big idea?
Which is a focus on results. So during our PLCs, we are not just collaborating to create the common assessments, which we are, but we're also kind of analyzing and judging our own effectiveness and our effectiveness as a team, as a school, based on the results that we get and the goals that we set, and that has helped me join this league personally, just become a little bit more aware of what other strategies are being effective in other situations, and it's able to help, it's able, it's been able to help me branch out and also to create other things with other people that I wouldn't have thought of before. It's awesome because even to see how certain proven strategies are being, you know, implemented in other classrooms by other teachers, and based on the data, we know that they're working, so we're able to have a lot of confidence going in saying, "Okay, well, this worked for so-and-so, so this should be able to, you know, I can implement this in the same fashion, this worked for me as well." So it's nice to be able to have that community where we're sharing this data, and it's about, you know, how can we bring everybody up and share in order to create that kind of environment where we can have that mastery?
And then all of this kind of ties together to our foundation of sustaining success. Talking about the tight part, we're always focusing on our ID academic standards, school goals, where good instructional practices, and we hope that that'll have an impact on student achievement. But as we said before, we're always looking back and we're always looking forward, so we're always looking back a week, forward a week. We're always reflecting, we're trying to revise what we're doing, we're in our PLC, we're looking at data, we're in our PLC, we're looking at professional development, and we just continue that cycle over and over and over so that it has a sustained impact on student achievement. Another thing that was kind of new for our staff is, a lot of times you sit at Bell for, right? And through the PLC process, we're always looking back, we're always looking forward, we're always regiving common assessments, we're always intervening, and we hope that, you know, at the beginning of the year, we're here, but if we continue that process, student achievement, the student learning will go up, and our students will be extremely successful. Mr. Sederloff and Dr. Moore, copy of the paper. He's going to talk to you about the form that our staff fill out at a PLC, and this is a working document, it's a living document. He's going to take me through this real quick.
So I'm going to kind of give you what a PLC meeting sort of looks like, but well, you could probably call it a form. A lot of times when we're at a meeting, we'll say, "Put it on the form, put it on the form." And so this is kind of like that driving force to kind of get them a focus of what they should be kind of studying in their PLC. So, and the top always has a celebration, and this is always filled out before they come to the meeting. So they come there, they have opportunity to sort of celebrate what the kid is doing well in the classroom. And each teacher, so this is for our fifth grade ELA, each teacher is assigned a color, and so when they're entering their data, they're entering some comments, it's always color-coded. And this is the data portion of it, and so they have all seven teachers there, and we're going to list what percentage of their students have mastery, 80 percent or higher. And again, this is that tight part of the common assessments, they're all looking at the same, the same test, the same common assessment. Then the percentage is, so what was the percentage of all their kids in their classes on that common assessment? And this really forces teachers to be vulnerable. Sometimes their students aren't going to do well on a common assessment, so you have that conversation of, what did you do in your class? What could I possibly do to help improve those scores? So it really forces teachers to be vulnerable. And then over here, we have the target students. These are the students that are just below that 80 percent, we call those the bubble kids. And so those are the students that we want to try to focus on, and they would list them by name, so we kind of took all the information out, but they would list them by name, and then they would look them in small groups to get those bubble kids above that 80 percent. We want to get the most pain clear up, so who identify those kids who are just right at the cusp of passing that 80 percent, and work with them, and get them backed up, and they have a higher percent, they have mastery of that 80 percent or higher. And so we really focus on the data first, and then as you go down on the form, you know, students have access to this throughout the weeks, they can always update it. We're looking at what are students learning, we're looking at common errors. Again, most of this information is filled out before they come to meetings, so we really have productive time when we meet and together. So then what are some of the common errors that students have? Really some link to discussion in terms of, again, not what are we teaching, but what are students learning? Always look at the positives, what works, what's doing well, what's going well in the classroom, highlight those as well. And then looking at those errors and what the students are messing up with on the assessments, what are some of those remediations that we can do in the classroom? This is a great time for teachers to share strategies and techniques that they use, sort of share with their colleagues to help students learn better in the classroom. So as Jeremy said with the living document, we want teachers to go back to this document and look at some of those strategies that I would share for remediation in case they kind of forget or they need some more ideas. They can go back to the form and see what other students were doing, and if they say, "Oh, I see," you know, talk about study island or past cards, they know the teacher put that on there, and they go ask that person, "Can you tell me more about the past card? How do you use those in the classroom?" So really getting teachers to collaborate and share some of the strategies that we're putting in the classroom. Then as you go down here, as we said, we're kind of playing ahead, looking back, so again, the tight part of looking at the standards, what are we trying to cover in the classroom for that following week? Looking at what are students going to struggle with, and making sure we're kind of prepared for those mistakes that we can make, and how we're going to meet those. Again, interdependent is a big part of the PLC process, who's going to do what, sort of sharing that workload and working together to create the best learning environment for our students. And then the other tight part is, how are we going to know what they're learning? So looking at those common assessments that check for understanding. Again, this is another chance for teachers to share some strategies, so like the so what journal. If I didn't know what the so what journal was, I could say, "Okay, who's the hook that types in red?" I can have conversations with them about how to use that in class, can I come watch and teach it in action? So kind of learn from each other there, and again, trying to make sure that we're meeting all the different levels of students, again, sharing ideas in terms of what we have students do to enrich them and work to get some more remediation. And the big part is, we always try to have one administrator in all these meetings, and this is not really, this is not driven by us, it's not driven by anyone admin, it's really driven by the teacher, and we're there, working together interdependently, just sort of, they have questions for us, and we kind of reply to their questions, we're all working together, and we're all on the same page. So this is what they can call by some form. Again, it's the driving force, we're really focused less on this now, we've got a lot more conversations, but this will sort of that driving force that we have to have, kind of get the process started.
And then we're going to leave you with the power of PLCs from five of our teachers, and before I turn it over to them, I want to thank all of our staff members for buying into this process because it is working. I took some of our PLC leaders to another school district in the state, and they're a very successful school district, and they have been doing PLCs for a long time, and when our PLC leaders left there, they were like, "We're great." You know, like, "We're really good, I mean, we are, we're doing really good things, we're doing more than them." So, and it's because of all their hard work, so I'm very thankful for everything that they do. And I'm going to turn it over to them so that they can kind of tell you the power of the PLCs through their eyes.
PLCs are helping broaden my teaching horizons. I've been able to implement proven strategies in a short amount of time due to our collaborative efforts during the day. My aha moment was, PLCs have really helped, because like Mr. Sederoff was saying, it's really a vulnerable moment, when you're coming with your gal, this is what, they're our kids, but this is what my class got on this common assessment. Maybe somebody else in the table, their kids blew it out of the water, and mine might not have that week. So, but when you shift the focus from my students to our students, it helps with that vulnerability because they're all of ours. We're all taking responsibility, whether their scores were really great this week or not so much, they're all of our kids, so it's all of our responsibility, and we work together as a team, that's interdependently, to find a way to help them all to get that 80 percent.
And then we use data to drive our instructions. I have a math team, we started it last year, we used, I knew last week. In that way, we're exposing our kids to the rigorous questions, and the different types of the college questions, and the technology enhanced questions. At that time, we're learning right there with them, because some of those technology questions are very interesting and hard to comprehend. So we choose that data and we keep exposing our kids to the higher DOK levels of questions.
And I work with this with May, we're both in the same math team, and I put that, our math team was ahead of game. We work really well together, we share, I mean, we are great sharers, but we shared a lot together. Because I guess my biggest example, like a chair from a normal, what's the difference between a PLC and a normal meeting? It'd be, because we met lots last year, right, and here before. We have it down to the day, you can go to any one of our math classrooms here, sixth grade and every grade, and all of the same thing. But we shared all the time last year, we shared, and like, he was saying, "Can you go on the board with the chair? What are you teaching? How are you teaching?" I've got a few little things, we already had a common assessment, but now our conversations is, we talk about being vulnerable. And my kids, I'm the one that has like the scores, I go, "Oh, I want my kids to do so much better this year." I've always wanted my kids to do better, but there is something about going to your coworkers and putting your scores on a piece of paper and sharing them with each other, because it's holding us even more accountable than we were before. And then our conversations have gone from, we still have a what you want to teach, but the tiniest errors, I can't explain to you that, we have conversations now about these tiny little simplification errors, and what are we going to do to fix those? And now our conversations are, okay, now we know the errors are, what are we going to do to fix them? So it is like taking a map and putting it under a microscope. A ton more than before, more of it. Well, let's do this packet on this day, and this packet on the detailed fine student training. I'm going along with that, I mean, that shift from the need to the lead, it's huge. I think fifth grade is further behind than sixth grade because number one, they're all in their, kind of in their small teams and groups and habits, so we're working really hard trying to catch up and trying to build our common assessments and get everything in place. I think I can start now that we're this far into the year, I can see how much our efforts are beginning to pay off. I mean, just the fact that we were the example sheet, we wouldn't have been the example at the beginning of the year. You might be, I mean, because it's very vulnerable, it's very, I mean, it's very different. It's a very different concept of the way we sat down and discussed things before, and it is much more transparent, and it makes you want to, I mean, I've done this a while, I've worked hard, I've taught children to what I thought was the best of my ability, but there's other ways to do it. Mine isn't the right way necessarily, and I see somebody else, and they're getting great scores, so you have that discussion with them. And it's being deeper into things that go beyond the surface. So again, I mean, I see it working.
Well, thank you for allowing us to present, and please give them a round of applause.
Thank you. (applause) On behalf of the district, I wanted to thank you. You know, we talked, there's a lot of talk about making teacher leaders, and Bell's making teacher leaders. These are your teacher leaders of all. These are the people who are growing and moving and moving their building, and I think they're a, they're a role model to everybody, all the rest of us in the district. And so I want to applaud them for the hard work they've done and what they have put forth, because our kids are so much better for this, and I think you're better. You've grown and you've shown the rest of us that it's okay to be vulnerable, that it's, it's the growth at the end that's important. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
(applause) No public comment this evening, as we move on to the consent agenda. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Are student field trips and professional travel? I ask for a motion to approve the student field trips and professional travel as requested.
I move to approve the field trips and professional travel.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye.[1794.82] Aye. All opposed? Have a report, Dr. Moore?
Yep, two quick reports. State law requires us to make the following two reports. The first one is every six months, we have to give a formal report on gang activity in our district, and I'm happy to report we have none. And secondly, we have to submit a report to the State Department of Ed on the staff evaluation plans after we have finalized, we got our school letter grades, and we have, that has been completed also.
Thank you very much. As we move on to other business, again, you notice if you have a sheet in front of you, the donations, sponsorships, grants to our school corporation have just been fabulous all year long, and I'm going to take a stab, because I didn't write that total number down, it was roughly just under $170,000.
It was $158,000.
Yeah, let's make it $170,000.
That means you got to get the rest.
Thank you, thank you very much, but a lot, a lot of people that have very much been helping our school district out. So I ask for a motion to accept the donations, the sponsorships, and the grants as requested.
I move that we accept the donations, sponsorships, and grants.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I ask for a motion to accept the grant of, it's a request for a receipt of the teacher appreciation grant.
And I will say a little, just a little bit about that. That comes from the state legislature, it's in the state budget every year. We have, we have a timeline to distribute the grants to our teachers. We are in a holding pattern right now because we're waiting on the high school letter grade to get through the appeal process. Because we have to give different amounts under state law to effective and highly effective, depending on what the high school letter grade is, that will depend on how many are effective and how many are highly effective. So once we have that same amount, once we get the information from the state, we will be divvying that up. So it's forthcoming.
I ask for a motion to approve the grant that Dr. Moore just talked about as requested.
I move to approve the grant.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
The third item is, we have, we were very fortunate in our youth first agreement through the Lilly Grant. They received another grant through the state of Indiana, so we're actually able to, at the same cost to us, increase the grant from three years to four years. So we're very happy about that.
I ask for a motion to approve the amendment as requested.
I move to approve the amended agreement. I second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Second, we're very excited, we'll have the people from South who are here tonight to stand if they would please. South, for the last year and a half, have been piloting a school of communications. They have a green room, they run a studio out of there, and they have formally petitioned the board, they would like to change their name to South Elementary School of Communications. And we were very excited about their direction. So thank you for coming tonight.
I ask for a motion to change the school name as requested.
I move that we approve the name change.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Again, we had another grant that we received from the state, and this is for our students who actually have a career completer. So when they go through a career pathway and they complete a course that results in industry certification, they receive, receive some additional funding from the state, and that's what the $16,000 is for.
I ask for a motion to approve the grant as requested.
I move to approve the grant.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Our next item is associated with our Lilly Grant, as part of our Lilly Grant, we are also adding the youth first model of intervention at the middle school, and this contract is for those services.
I ask for a motion to approve the agreement as requested.
I move to approve the agreement.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
And next, the other part of our Lilly Grant, the grant requires us to have an evaluation component. So Esol Solutions is the vendor that we have selected for the evaluator of the Lilly Grant data as was a requirement of the grant.
I ask for a motion to approve the agreement as requested.
I move to approve the agreement.
And I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
And number eight is very exciting, it is to expose Carl Wagner's senior career coach position at the high school. We feel like it is such an important vital part of our high school culture now that we want to go ahead and secure that for another year.
I ask for a motion to approve the extension agreement as requested.
I move to approve the extension.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
And next, we have two controllers at Martinsville High School that are in need of repair that cannot be fixed, and we need to allocate $15,000 out of our emergency fund to do that.
I ask for a motion to approve resolution number 417 as requested.
I move to approve resolution number 417. I second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
And the next two items have to do with the new funds that the state has created for school districts. The first one authorizes this school to transfer on January 1, the general fund balance to the education fund. And then the second resolution authorizes the treasurer to transfer the balance in the CPI transportation and bus replacement fund to the new operations fund.
On the first one, I ask for a motion to approve resolution 418 as requested.
I move to approve resolution 418. I second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? And moving on to the second resolution, I ask for a motion to approve resolution 419 as requested.
I move that we approve resolution 419.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Next item on our agenda here this evening, the board members' comments, comments and items for future agendas. Debbie, please.
I was very fortunate to go to a couple of the elementary school Christmas programs this year, and they were just all amazing. I missed some of them, but I got to see all of the comments and stuff, and I just want to compliment all of those Christmas programs, middle school, elementary, everything, you do a great job and you work very hard, and it's always fun to watch them too. So kudos to you guys.
Tana?
Congratulations to the South School chess team. They recently competed in a competition and won third place overall.
Robotics teams at Smith Fine Arts Academy and Brooklyn STEM Academy competed early this month and both had strong finishes. We are so proud of their accomplishments.
Thank you to all the teachers, students, bus drivers, and staff that collected or donated toys to various organizations this Christmas season. We truly have the spirit of gifts.
And as president of the board, Dr. Moore presented Tana Lob with a plaque before the meeting started, at the beginning of the meeting. Just want to say thank you for your dedication and service to the school corporation the last four years. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
We're going to miss you. So thank you very much, Tana. On behalf of the board, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a safe and Happy New Year.